The following program is an original production of WICC CBS Chicago.
High levels of gun and gang violence have been prevalent in Chicago for many years, but 2012 has been a year like no other. By June of 2012, there were more people killed in Chicago than in Afghanistan during the same period. Our city is pleading for peace, and the hope is that this town hall meeting will deliver some useful solutions that can hopefully put us on the right path to save our children, our streets, and our city. Hi, I'm Lilia Chacon, and welcome to A Plea for Peace, a town hall meeting on violence in Chicago. I'd like to introduce you to someone we hear five days a week on Chicago's leading R&B hip-hop station, WGCI 107.5 FM, Tony Schofield. Tony, welcome.
Thanks, Lilia. I'm really, really excited to be here at A Plea for Peace. As you know, as members of the media, our job is to report the violence in Chicago, and we get it firsthand. So I'm really excited to be here and to see if we can get some dialogue going from not only this audience, but the members of this panel, to see if we can find some solutions to end the violence in our city. So I am really, really excited, and hopefully, we can get some dialogue going today.
Thanks for being here, Tony. And please join me as I welcome our panel of distinguished guests. On my right, Chicago's top cop Gary McCarthy, Superintendent of the Chicago Police Department; Grammy Award-winning hip-hop artist and youth crime prevention advocate Rhymefest; Diane Latiker, founder and president of Kids Off the Block, a community-based organization established to give hope and guidance to the youth in Chicago's Roseland area; Dr. Lance Williams, Assistant Director of Northeastern Illinois University's Jacob H. Carruthers Center for Inner City Studies and co-author of "The Almighty Black Peastone Nation: The Fall, Rise, and Resurgence of an American Gang"; Pamela Bosley, the mother of a young teen, Tyrell Bosley, who was murdered; Bob Jackson, Executive Director of Cure Violence Roseland, formerly known as Cease Fire Roseland, an anti-violence prevention program serving the Roseland neighborhood; Minister Rahim Atang, Board Member of the Pastors of Englewood, Coalition of Ministers Representing the Englewood and Auburn-Gresham Neighborhoods of Chicago; Alberto Vasquez, a former gang member turned mentor for youth and ex-felons in the Latino community. Welcome to you all. We have a lot of ground to cover here this evening. Let's start with, how did we get here? How did this turn into a summer of unprecedented violence in Chicago? And I'm going to start with our Police Superintendent Gary McCarthy.
Well, good evening, and it's my pleasure to be here. And I think it's really important that we engage in these discussions. A couple of things. First of all, there's no one solution and no one reason how we got here. Whether it's poverty, education, the breakup of the family unit, a lack of community, we all play a role in this. And in my role, I'd like to talk about firearms. The proliferation of firearms in this city is overwhelming. We lead the country every single year in the number of guns seized by the Chicago Police Department. In the first six months of this year, we seized three firearms for every one that the Los Angeles Police Department seized, which is a pretty big deal. But listen to this: We seized nine guns for every one that the NYPD seized. There's something wrong. There's something really wrong with that. And the way those guns get here is many-faceted, but the primary way that they get here is through something called straw purchases. And the way it works in the state of Illinois is you get an FOID card, you walk into a gun shop, and you could buy as many guns as you want. And the fact is, there's absolutely no accountability once you walk out the door with those firearms. There's no requirement to report the loss, theft, or transfer of those guns. And as a result, those guns are sold legally and transferred illegally to gang-bangers who end up shooting people, and we find them on the streets.
Is that something other cities have a better control on than Chicago?
Well, it's not a city problem. It's a state problem. It's actually a national problem, because once we... If we were to close that door here in Illinois, we'd have to close the back door in Indiana at the same time, because you could just drive into Indiana. Unless... And people call that gun control. And the NRA and some of the other special interest groups will automatically attack, saying, "Second Amendment, right to bear arms." Well, this... If we require telling us when you lose, transfer, or a gun is stolen from you, that's not telling somebody you can't own your gun legally. That's just saying, "Let us know where that gun goes if it leaves your possession." And what does that end up doing? You probably know the story of our officer Dell Pearson got shot back in March. He almost died. He lost three-quarters of the blood in his body. The gun that shot Dell Pearson was purchased in 1972 in the state of Illinois by a 52-year-old woman who died in 2006 in Little Rock, Arkansas. And we have absolutely no idea where that gun has been since 1972. That is absolutely unconscionable. You need a license in this state to braid hair. You need a license for barbering. If you sell your car, you have to notify the state. But if you sell a gun or lose a gun, you don't have to tell anybody. So in my world, that's... You know, that's my part of it. I can't do much about the poverty or the education, but I could do something about the guns, and this is something that has to be done.
Let me ask some of the people who have been on the street: Bob Jackson, Alberto Vasquez. Would this have made it harder for you to get a gun?
I don't think so. From my experience in the past, all you've got to do is take a trip across the state line, went to Wisconsin, Indiana...
So he's right about closing the back door.
Yeah, and you get the guns just as easy in the city.
Or you do it nationally. That's why I'm saying the city or the state law is not as important as having it happen nationally.
Something else is at the root of this: anger, unemployment, boredom. What do you see as the biggest factor here that's driving this animosity, this almost self-hatred in our neighborhoods? And also, the unemployment, because if a job in our culture is so important to your self-esteem, what does it do to these young people when they can't find work, when they can't find something that gives them self-worth? Is that something you'd care to offer a comment on?
I would, but I think my brother, Shane Rhymefest, is the best person...
Jump in.
Well, you know, I believe jobs can be created. Jobs are not something that we have to, in our communities, beg for. I've seen very creative young people create jobs for themselves when given the right tools. One of the things that I would say is a big problem in our community is that we have a huge moral, spiritual deficiency that is promoted by media, that is promoted by the lack of parents. And when I say "parents," I don't mean... You know, a lot of our young people have what I would call a living situation. And a living situation is kind of like, yeah, I live with my mom, but my mom's always working, my dad's in jail. They're just a guy that kind of lives in the house, that comes back and forth. And so, parents, to me, can not only be the ones that are in your home, but the guy next door can parent you. You know, he can guide you and be more than a mentor. So, you know, I don't believe that jobs are so much our issue if we can have these other social safety nets in our community take place. I've seen young people be able to create jobs for themselves, and I've also seen...
It's entrepreneurship.
Yeah, entrepreneurship. And I've also seen people get jobs, you know, and I have to congratulate and give props to Ed Gardner for what he's doing on the construction sites, you know? However, however, I've seen shovels put in somebody's hand one season and taken out the next season. I've seen young people get jobs and not have the social skills to be able to hold jobs. So there's a whole, as we talk about education, there's a whole education that needs to be taken place to even be able to maintain a job. It's not being... It's not taking place in our community.
All right. Now, before we move into our next set of topics, I would like to take a moment to show everyone just how serious this issue is that we're dealing with. According to the Chicago Tribune's Red Eye, which keeps a citywide homicide tracker, as of October 11th, 2012, there have been 410 people killed in our city. In this auditorium alone, it holds 250 seats. That means the number of people killed is almost double the number of people that could be in this room. It's a startling and sad thought, to say the least. Let's take a look at the list of Chicagoans, all our victims of violence in Chicago. And we're going to get a comment from someone who has suffered a personal loss. I know personally that Pamela Bosley's son, Tyrell, was shot to death on his way into a church. Pamela, would you like to tell us what happens in your heart when you see a list like that?
You know what? I'm Pam Bosley, you're right. And my son was murdered April 4th, 2006, coming outside of a church. It hurts. I'm a mother who lost my child. Plus, I'm a founder of a group called Purpose Over Pain, and we all lost our children to violence. So what we do is, since I lost my son, my goal is... I have two more other children. My goal is to save my two sons, my other two sons, and save other children. And it hurts just to read other names and hear other mothers cry and meet other parents end up in this unfortunate situation. The pain never go away. It's like somebody's poking your heart, and it just won't stop. So even though it's six years, the pain is still here. But that's why I'm out here on the front line now, because I don't want another mother to ever suffer like I do, every single day. So that's why I came today.
Thank you for being here tonight, Pamela. Now, some of the people that we saw listed on the screen were killed in the Roseland community. Like other city communities, Roseland is struggling to cope with the violence issue. Diane Latiker is a beacon of hope for Roseland. The struggles that she and her group of kids deal with on a daily basis was documented on tape more than a year ago. Let's take a closer look at Kids Off the Block and their involvement in the neighborhood.
Welcome to Roseland, a little piece of Chicago most people don't even know exists. We have four public high schools serving Roseland, where only 4% of the 11th graders are performing up to the state standard. On any given day, one of every three students don't even bother to go to school. And our unemployment rate is three times higher than the rest of Chicago. The only time you ever hear about us is on the news, when one of our children dies and another senseless kill. My name is Diane Latiker, and seven years ago, I'd had enough. I raised their kids in this neighborhood, but when my youngest started running wild, I decided to start Kids Off the Block. This is where we used to have KOB for seven years. A lot of memories here. I quit my job, and I invited kids into my home. We staged plays in this living room, went out skating, swimming, anything to keep them from going back to hanging out on the corners. We started out with 10 kids and wound up with 75. And we did it all with what money we had. Thanks to the community trust and others, we were able to move into a building next door this year. But it's not all fun and games. Kids want to be listened to, and if you listen, you'll learn a lot.
Ms. D, there's a difference between snitching and doing the right thing.
You don't have to warn them. You can't... What's wrong with going to the police and trying to straighten all that out? I call the police, I call it mama, I call it daddy, I call everybody else I can find.
This is our time now. That's back when you was in your day.
Actually, change starts with you all. You know, every generation can change what the other generation did.
You can't do that, Mom.
You can't do what?
What you doing?
What, care about it?
No.
Across the street is a memorial I decided to build three years ago, after Blair Hope died protecting a young girl in a school bus shooting. Here's the very first one. I was in Home Depot one day, and I found these stones. I wrote the names and ages of every kid who died in street shootings. There were 30 then. Now we're up to 220, all in Chicago, all dead. We've had to rebuild the memorial six times, and we're always six or seven stones behind. It's changed a lot since I first moved to Roseland. It used to be the gangs, but now it's the cliques on every corner, all trying to protect their turf. People are afraid to go out. They're locked up in their houses because they're shooting every night.
You're seeing it now, because this is after school. Usually, kids are running to the store, they're riding their bikes, they're outside, you know? Where are they? Hey, y'all. How you doing? Right in front of my house in the memorial, jumped off the bikes and lit it up over there. And now, before that even happened, somebody got shot in 119.
Everybody's scared to come out. They don't want to come out, because outside they come out, they get shot at.
My daughter had got shot.
And the boys came to our gang. They had star shoes. I got shot. I got a .22 in my room.
This is James Davis. Say hello to the people.
Like I said, I'm used to it. I can say it's good or bad. We all know it's bad. Everybody knows it's bad. Everybody knows what they want to do, to change or whatnot. And with that being said, if it ain't being done, what's the point?
I love you too.
If a genie came to Roseland and granted me one wish, I'd buy two vans, and on those vans it would say, "I want to help you." And I would ride around my community and pick up those young people that are standing out on the corners. I'd bring them back to the center and ask them what their needs are. We'd have schools that prepared them for college and training programs, that got them into real jobs. I want them to see that they have to work for what they want, that they have to go to school, and that they have to do what's right. It's crazy. It's tough right now in Roseland. But what are you going to do? If you want to stay in your community, you're going to have to speak up. And that's what I'm doing.
Diane, probably the most chilling words are that when you put those headstones out, you're always one or two behind. What is it going to take to stop the headstones?
Well, first, let me say that 376 there, and we're 101 behind.
Oh, that's a terrible number.
It really hurts my heart, and I'm off-topic here, seeing us sitting here, and we're discussing the lives of our children. And I don't know if everybody gets that, we're sitting here discussing the lives of our children. Because we know if we don't do anything, this is going to continue, and we're going to continue to lose them. And we know all the problems. We know what they are. We live them. We live in them. Actually, we know what the solutions are too. So when are we going to get it? When are we going to say enough is enough, just like Dr. King did? And we're going to come out of our houses and out of our churches and out of our agencies, and we're going to say enough is enough, and we're going to stand up for our children? Because they don't know how to stand up for themselves. When you put a gun in a 14-year-old's hand, all he knows to do is shoot it because he saw it on TV. He doesn't get it that he's not coming back, or that the person he shoots is not coming back. But we know. When are we, as adults, going to decide to be adults? Because what we do is lead and guide and nurture and care. When are we going to do that? And stop talking? And stop marching and rallying? And actually raise our children as a community? That's what I would ask all of us, and that's what I really want to see.
You're one person. We need many, many more like you. Now, I believe Tony Schofield is in the audience with some additional information.
We have a couple of people who want to ask some questions this evening. What's your name, man?
My name is Rashid Shadid Ansar.
Okay, go ahead with your question, Rashid.
What is a solution that you all may have or bring to the table to resolve the negativity of the music industry that's being put out, not only just with Chicago local artists, but just across the nation, if not really worldwide, especially with the rap music, because it's not hip-hop anymore? And more so, really, the rap music and the feud that's going on? Thank you.
Good question.
Well, you know, I do have to salute Lupe Fiasco. He does have the Lupe Fiasco Foundation. A lot of times, we see negativity, and we don't pay attention to a lot of the good that's going on, so we don't empower the good, because we're giving the negativity all of our energy, right? So Father Flager, for instance, does a wonderful job when he brought the gangs together, and all four gangs were playing basketball. He got each member of those gangs from different gangs jobs, brought them into the church, and he's doing wonderful work with them over on 79th Street. Lupe Fiasco, and I like to talk about the good. Lupe Fiasco has the Lupe Fiasco Foundation, where they clothe, they feed, they have a book club over on the West Side, and they're educating young people. You know, I think a lot of times, we... Young people look at rap music as their religion. It is the new religion for the youth, right? The problem is that it's controlled by corporations that don't have their best interests at hand. If you look at the person who recently got a million-dollar deal, that person was signed by the same person who signed Tupac Shakur in Death Row. And we see the violence that broke out between East Coast and West Coast? Well, that person who owns that record label is now seizing that opportunity to exploit Chicago violence. Now, let's look at some of these rap artists that we have out here. They obviously have mental health issues that have not been addressed. The other problem, the other point to that is, they need advocates. They're being exploited as children. In fact, some of them are on probation and being exploited to do illegal things by a record label, and nobody's being held accountable. Now, I would like to ask our superintendent, you know, why... You know, I recently read an article with an artist who's on probation, and the probation officer said to the artist, "I'm your biggest fan, and I would love to go on tour with you." As the artist was doing an interview at a gun range, and the artist is 17 years old. You know, it's like up is down, down is up, forward is backwards. And so, this exploitation, I can't blame on these artists, because they're children. And now, they want to sign them younger and younger. "I'm going to give a 17-year-old a million dollars, a 16-year-old, and then I'm going to put you back in your neighborhood with a million dollars." And in fact, this artist was given a label to sign other kids like him. Where are... Where's the investigation and the charges brought against the adults? When I look at these videos and these YouTube, there are adults next to kids holding guns, real guns. There's a video with a 13-year-old from Roseland with a gun in his hand. And there's an adult that says, "Contact me here for booking." Where are the charges?
But there's no value.
This child abuse.
Let me just address that a little bit. And first of all, I agree with you 1,000%.
Yes, sir.
But let me explain something to you. Some of those... Some of those folks who are in pictures on Facebook, holding AK-47s and revolvers and so on, are on parole and probation, and we can't get something done about that. We have pictures of them, holding these weapons. They're on parole, they're on probation, they're out of their residences, they have ankle bracelets, they're out of residence when they're not supposed to be, and we can't get anything done about that.
Why not?
Because it's the criminal justice system, and there's a lot of holes in that system. And it's not just police, it's probation, it's parole, it's the judiciary, it's defense, it's corrections, all of those moving parts. So we can bring those cases, we get nothing done with them.
Now, Chief McCarthy, to some extent, have the police succeeded too well in taking out the hierarchy, the gang leaders, and leaving the sergeants, leaving this fractious, fragmented bandja, as Diane said? Now they're dealing with cliques. There used to be some discipline. There used to be some order to these gangs.
I kind of reject that.
You don't agree with that?
For a very simple reason. From 1991 to 1995, in this city, there were 900 murders every single year. And when people talk about the good old days, we're talking about 900 murders. We've been at 450 for about eight years, which is why we're changing the way that we do our police work. Because if you always do the same thing, you're always going to get what you always got. And we have an unacceptable level of violence in this city. So we're changing the way that we're approaching gun violence and crime in general, changing the way that we do police work. The fact is, this has more to do, in my mind, you know, it's not like there was discipline, because if there was discipline, the discipline was, "Go kill somebody," because there was twice as many murders. The fact is, these are just young kids, and I mentioned, you know, you got the breakup of the family unit, you got poverty, you got lack of education, like was already brought up. You got a culture where rap music becomes a religion. You know, we're in a mess here. We're in a mess, and everybody plays a role in this, as you rightfully point out. And it's up to teachers, these kids need mentors, they need parents, you need the parent next door, right? You don't need... You don't need the parent showing up at the hospital. You need the parent to be there when the kid's on the street with a gun. And this happens day in and day out.
How big a factor is the culture of no snitch? And this is something that was touched on in Diane's, and Cease Fire and Cure Violence is...
You know what? It starts back at the home. The bottom line, this starts back with the parents. The community needs to... You can't blame the superintendent for the violence in our community. We've got to start blaming the parents, their guardians. What? You see your kid on video, and you see him with a gun, and you don't address it? Something's wrong with our community. The parents have to stand up, face their children, and discipline them, period. Well, you know, I think that's easy to say, but I've seen things where parents are saying, "Well, I was next to him holding the gun in the video." You know, because parents... So where's the mental health with this parent now? Well, the thing is, it's kind of like the psychosis of my son's going to the NBA. I don't care about what grades he makes, he's going... So now, the dream, the fantasy that has been presented by record labels, that you can do this and make a million dollars and buy your mom a house, mom is in on it. Dad is in on it. So it's okay to kill? I'm not saying it's okay. I'm saying this is the way it is. So now, we have to address that. We have to address the fact that parents, those parents, are not available. So now, how are we going to become parents? That's what you step in, I step in, I ain't stepping, all of us as parents stepping.
Chief McCarthy, you've got one thing to add here?
I just wanted to answer your question, which is, the no-snitch culture is a problem. And we're about to try and take this on head-on. I'm a linebacker, and I generally take things on head-on. And what we're looking for is, we're looking for artists, we're looking for athletes, and we're looking for actors, somebody who these kids are actually going to relate to and listen to, to give them the message that snitching is if you and I commit a crime, and I get caught, and I say, "You're with me." If you're a victim or a witness to a crime, by saying something, you might be saving a life. And that is not snitching. Snitching is giving up your co-conspirator. That's snitching. And we're looking for folks, I have an enormous amount of folks who are looking to get involved in this, and I'm going right for the top. I want like the people who these kids are going to relate to. I want those artists who are willing to step up and do something. We're going to get somebody who's going to set up a marketing program, and we're going to make a big deal out of this, because nobody's taken a swing at this yet in this country. And it's not just about the kids not snitching, it's the parents not snitching.
They run on it.
It's the parents who are also doing the same exact thing.
Minister Atang.
And sometimes, snitching don't always work. Snitching can get somebody killed. If you looked in the Bible and read the story of David and Goliath, David didn't hit Goliath in the foot. David hit Goliath in the head. And until we stop looking at the foot and going to the head of these corporations and making demands on them to do what needs to be done, such as, they putting all the negative stuff about rap on, right? Well, balance it out and put some positive stuff on there too, giving people a choice where there was no choice. Another thing, we looking at these corporate conglomerates. Now, my thing is this: I always hear about the gun turn-in and whatnot. Once the guns are turned in, it seems as though crime goes up. Something wrong with that picture. Then the people that promotes, that sponsors the gun turn-in is Clear Channel. Now, how can Clear Channel sponsor turning in guns and then... Clear Channel sponsor, turn in guns, and then the radio playing all day about why you need to kill these people and take this gun and do this and beat this, be with it at and all that, but yet he wants to smear it or cover it up by saying, "Here, we don't want the guns on the street either." So we need to hold the corporate industry accountable too.
Before we continue-
We can't just sit still and just watch this stuff happen. Let me say this real quick.
You've got one more thing, alright.
In 1999, a Chicago Defender article was put out, and it was an investigation done by Channel 5, that said that guns that were turned in at, at the police station that was in the evidence lab were found to be back on the streets, alright? And that 25% of those working in the evidence room had been tested for cocaine use. So now, since 99, and that's before the superintendent was in office, since 99, nobody has investigated that and solved that situation. So now, I keep saying, we keep on smearing over stuff.
Minister Atan, I need to move to-
We can't do that.
Alright, I need to move to one more, one more question here.
We got to stop talking. That's why I don't do these things.
Alright.
These things.
I'm sorry to cut you off. I'm going to take a question now from our website. The question is from Ava Odom Martin from the south side, and she says, "How do you reach a kid who has no one that cares about them? You have to give a child a validation, and the gangs seem to do that. What can we do to counter this takeover?" We've touched on this tonight. What are the gangs doing that the parents are missing?
Family.
The gang is their new family?
Negative family, but a family. Even a clique is a family. When you go to a block and you see six different gangs on one block getting along, but protecting that block, then you know there's some structure missing here. And, and I want to, I just want to go back one minute about, I don't care what nobody else is doing, and I'm sorry, I just don't. The police is not the problem by itself, you not the problem by yourself, the music is, we all the problem. And when parents can't take care of their kids, or they don't take care of their kids, what is the community for? What is, what is that word for? I'm going to take up that kid, because I want to live in my community, I want to live in peace. So as a resident, I'm going to take it up. We, we got to start looking at our community different than what it's meant for, and we got to start looking at our kids differently. We really do. That kid, I was a kid once, I was a kid. I wanted all the love I could get and all the attention I could get to be who I am today.
And now you're giving it back.
And why we don't want to do that?
Alright, Diane, we're going to take a look now at a clip from The Interrupters. It's a powerful documentary produced in 2011 that takes a close look at how a group of former gang members and felons are attempting to sow peace in several Chicago communities. Let's watch a clip from The Interrupters.
Mayor Musk is holding a prayer visual for a kid shot sitting in front of his home just listening to the radio. Cory definitely wasn't in the gangs, and he was loved by his block. When rage sets in, when ego sets in, when a Hennessy sets in-
Hey, I'm gonna walk down here to where Cory's friends are, you stay right here. These young guys say, "Let's go get who we think did it." I'm hearing 20 different things why that brother got changed. And all of it is stupid. All of it is stupid. Two o'clock in the afternoon when these babies coming home from school, y'all, shoot, for real. This is unacceptable for me to be holding this boy, this young man's obituary. Schools, churches, your mama's house, your cars, those are safe zones. When I was about your age. I was making some real stupid decisions and some stupid calls that was causing me my life, blood on my hands and my head. Stop. Who does this baby belong to? Who does this little shorty belong to? He just hanging around, y'all? He just hang, this little, this little, he just hanging around, y'all, right? So he see everything that you all do, right? So if this brother right here catch a case and do 100 years, whose fault is it? It's his fault? Teach him righteous. Y'all got it?
Yeah.
Y'all got it?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm looking to you.
Roberto Vazquez, I want to come back to you. You were in a gang. What made you join up with them? And would you have killed for them?
At one point, I probably would have, because they were my family, that's what I had, that was my circle of life. You know, and I joined them because I had a lot of anger inside of me. There was a lot of things that happened as I was growing up that just fueled this anger, and I had no other way of releasing it. And being in that gang life, you know, they condoned it. I could go around, beat up people, and that just made you look cool. But that was just my way of lashing out on the world in regards to the anger I had inside of me. So I just took it out on the world without no repercussion. I didn't care who I hurt, I didn't care if I hurt my family in the, in the process. I was just trying to act out the feelings I had inside of me. There was, you know, in the community, especially in Latino community, behavioral health is a taboo. We don't talk about post-traumatic stress disorder, we don't talk about trauma. These are issues that we really need to start processing and talking to our youth about, because you do suffer from these, and these issues cause you to do things that you have no understanding about. All these angers, all this frustration you walk around bottled up inside of you, it's a direct effect from trauma. And if we can start educating our youth and start talking about, you know, we need to process this, we need to work this out in a productive, more structural way, we can start answering some of these root causes of what's going on in the lives and in the way our youth are thinking.
What turned you around, and what lesson is there for the rest of us that are looking for solutions?
I had mentors that were consistent. You know, I would fall off of the track if I went to jail, or I got, you know, went on a, in the neighborhood, you know, sometimes you get lost in our communities when you're involved in gangs. But yet, they would still come back to me, I would still go back to them. Even to this day, I still have relationship with these individuals. They are still my mentor in a professional level now. They have encouraged me, and they have pushed me to excel to the greatest I can be. And I think that's the thing, we need to be consistent. Nowadays, a lot of our programming, for instance, like Ceasefire, like Safety Networks, the YMCA Street Intervention Program, they're getting a lot of their funding cut. And so there's such a high turnaround on these mentors that are on the street, they can establish solid relationships with these youth. And that's what we need. We need to have a core group of individuals that can go into these communities and set up these relationships and follow them for a process of years. It can't just be a one-year contract, two-year contract, it can't be a commitment that's minute, this is a lifelong thing that you have to go through.
It sounds like a father. Yes, miss. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I say this real quick? When you, when you said that it can't be a part-time relationship and whatnot, it sounded as if their mentorship cut off when the funding cut off. And that's what the challenge is, that's the real challenge. Because if you really know a solution to something, then you're supposed to go for it and let the money follow you. See, someone told me that not just recent, I say, "You still working at this school?" He said, "No," I say, "Why not?" He said, "The funding was cut." Well, what happened to your heart if it was really for your people, or was it for the paycheck? So that's what we need to challenge. Everybody who might be a humanitarian might be doing it for a job. So if you're doing this and you're doing it from your heart, you don't need the funding. The funding will come if you just have faith and do the work. Now, I'm not talking about you, I'm thinking of those people that you mentioned that were mentors. And we deal with mentorship. There's a brother right here in this audience, and he's part of my organization. And he's mentoring a young man right now next to him and at least five others. But he got them from Robeson High School. When the funding was cut, he continued to mentor them. And he's mentoring them right now and teaching them how to build and earn income for themselves. And that's what we do. I was his mentor. Now, I said, "Pass it down." That's it. Just pass it down. And that's what he's doing.
I definitely think that there's an issue, there's definitely an issue when you are saving people for a living, you know?
Yes, sir.
And, and so, you know, you know, but, so, I'm glad that, that I, I write raps, you know, for people, and that I make money in the music industry, and social justice is my love thing, you know what I mean? But, you know, brothers like Lance Williams, like, he's studied this, you know that you, you have relationships with these gangs, you know?
Yeah. I think, I think these conversations are great, but what we tend to do in these conversations is begin to focus all of our attention on the victims, right? In our, in our academic program, we call it victim analysis. We are trying to get our students away from analyzing the victim. The community is victimized by a larger systemic problem that we all talked about, right? We, we're not taking into consideration, when we, when we point the finger at a family and say, you know, I heard, I heard an official, a city official say, "Who raised you?" when talking about an individual who had been involved in gun violence. The city official asked, "Who raised you to be like this?" But nobody says anybody, anything about the disparity of wealth in our communities. What you have in this country, you have 400, roughly 450 individuals in the United States of America who have more wealth than over 50% of the people in the United States of America. So we have communities that are starving, have been starving, and people are trying to survive these hellacious conditions, and their response to trying to survive this plays out in some of these things that we're talking about and violence. And then to come back and point a finger at the community and say, "Well, you know, you're not raising your kids right." And in reality, there is nothing in the, the community is being starved to death, right? And until we address those issues, we're going to continue to have this discussion.
But doctor, I would submit this. We're going to have tonight a vice presidential debate, and these issues that we're talking about are not going to be brought up on that stage. And they're not going to be brought up on that stage, because the cavalry ain't coming. It's over with. We've been dropped off.
Yes.
We here. So what we have to do, I can't look at those 457 rich people. Being broke for us ain't nothing new.
Absolutely.
But this right here that is happening is new. So, so, so how do we at least get back to a time where community came together? See, I, I believe that regardless of what those 457 people are doing, we have a communal spiritual moral issue that is not being addressed.
Yes.
Because if our children are looking at Keith, or, or King Louis, or all of this as their religion, as their priests.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Then, then that means that we are not fathering.
Absolutely.
In a way, you know?
I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. But what's going on is that you're talking about a natural process of parenting taking place in an unnatural environment, right? And that, that does not happen. You can't just talk about, I mean, when we talk about the oppression, it has, it has actually intensified in our community during the times where we were right out of slavery. The oppression wasn't as intense because we were connected to the land, we could feed ourselves, we could shelter ourselves. Now-
Self-sufficiency.
We have food deserts in our communities, which makes us more disconnected from nature. And then let's stop fronting-
I'm going to jump in here first.
Can I just say this real quick?
Okay, alright.
Let's just stop fronting about violence in, violence is an American way. That is the American way. This country, this country, this country was built on violence. It was built on ethnic gang banging that still goes on today. Now all of a sudden, we, when we become more American, then all of a sudden, it's something wrong with us. But this country is always had a violence, a violent problem. It got to where it is through violence. So what makes us think all of a sudden now, we're going to stop being, and then should we be the only ones that are non-violent? The only problem with violence for us-
Chicago could. Chicago needs to do something. We're, we're going to get a question from the audience. Tony Schofield, you have somebody commenting on this?
As I saw the list of names, I saw, I saw the name of a close friend of mine named Jamarz Askew, who was shot by the same gun that shot me on July 19th in Auburn Gresham neighborhood. And I was wondering, why weren't there any young people on the panel?
He means younger.
Yeah.
Okay. Diane, you agree?
Yes.
What would those, what would those young people be telling him?
If they were just sitting here, that would be telling them something without even talking to them. It would mean that they have a voice.
Okay.
I agree 100%.
Alright. Tony, interesting. One more?
What's your name?
Hi, my name is Allison Williams. My question is, what is the responsibility of the aldermen in the neighborhood, and why are, why is the community afraid to go to the elected officials in the community?
You know, that's a great point, that's a great question. You know, when, when I ran for alderman, I was pulled aside by one of the, one of the mayor's people, and they said to me, "Do you know what being an alderman is?" And I said, "Yeah, you know, I'm going to be a community advocate, and I'm a legislator." They said, "No, no, 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 no. You're a legislator. You're not an advocate." And so when you speak to a lot of aldermen, at least in our communities, they don't believe that they're advocates of the community. They don't believe that that is their job and their duty. And in fact, if you speak to a lot of them, they burnt out. And they believe, one alderman told me, "If you get this position, you're a trash collector." This is, this is collecting trash. You see all these papers on my desk, all these people I got a call back, they all got a problem, and I got to clean the trash up. So a lot of black aldermen look at their communities as trash. So what result do you think you're going to get? You know, so, and, and a lot of them have it locked down. Let's look at how, how political office works in Chicago. The difference in my campaign is that my money didn't come from the usual players. So I was able to do a little bit more. The money that comes to the people who are elected comes from the union, sometimes the church that has a whole bunch of property in the community, and it's locked down by the same players that are keeping the same thing going for the 30, 20 years that you see. And until that is broken up by, by the, but, but see, this is, I'll say what Barack say, "Don't clap, vote."
That's exactly right.
So, so the thing is-
Know who you're voting for.
The apathy. I, I lived in a community that has 60,000 registered voters, but only 4,000 people came out to vote.
Wow.
So I lost by 100 votes.
Oh.
Everybody was rooting for you, but they don't vote because of the apathy. We have to get over our own sorrow.
Alright, Tony?
And then we can make our legislators and advocates work for us.
You've got one more question for us.
We have another audience member with a question. What's your name, man?
My name is Dorian, and I just wanted to make a comment, just going back to what Superintendent McCarthy was talking about, gang violence. I was looking at the murals here, and it's not just children on this mural. You have people of all ages, young and old, in the city of Chicago being gunned down. My thing is, I think a big reason why there's so much violence in Chicago is because the citizens, the law-abiding citizens are unable to adequately protect themselves from these criminals according to the gun laws and the regulations that have been put out. There are gun laws where law-abiding citizens, they cannot carry their weapon with them. So they're basically sitting ducks for someone to just run up on them and just shoot them.
Does that happen in all neighborhoods, or just some neighborhoods?
I live in South Shore. I'm originally from Eaglewood, and I've spent half of my life in Auburn Gresham. Those are practically three of the most dangerous neighborhoods on the south side of Chicago.
Chief, is the answer more guns?
The answer to illegal guns is not more guns. That, that is not the answer. But what I, here's what I want you to think about for a second. When people say concealed carry, I say Trayvon Martin, okay? Because we make mistakes all the time. The police make mistakes. And we get trained, we get, we get, we go through the academy, we do our street-level training, and we make mistakes. Now, if you're going to go and, and carry a firearm, and you go through a six-week training course, and you say, "Here, have at it, here's more guns," it's not going to work out the way you think it's going to work out. Studies have shown that that is truly not the case. That's rhetoric and propaganda from special interests. What is the case is that we have to cut off the illegal firearms. That's what it is. We have to cut off the illegal firearms. The legal guns are not the problem. But concealed carry, I'm not a big advocate for. You know, that's, that's my own personal belief. I'm not speaking as a police superintendent right now. And I, and I feel that way because of exactly what I said. You take somebody who's not well-trained in a firearm, you put it in their hands, and you're going to have a tragedy coming.
Alright, Pam, okay.
Concealed carry, you know, if we was carrying guns, when my son was shot, I was going to go shoot somebody. So you got to remember, you have people getting Alzheimer's, it's a lot going on, and everybody don't need a gun. If, if, you know, if the police can't sometime target right, and you got a gun that you was trained two years on, on how to use it, then you go out and you trying to shoot somebody. I mean, how could you sleep at night if you shoot somebody, you, a citizen, you know, Chris-
I mean, how could you sleep at night if you shoot somebody, you a citizen, you know, Christian or what have you? But I just, I just, you know, if, if, um, if something happened, because a lot of us get angry, you know, you lose your job, if you have a gun, you're gonna use it. So I, I say less guns as possi- you know, we trying to get guns off the street.
Murder rates like Canada and Great Britain don't even come close to the United States because they don't have the firearm problem that we have.
Yeah, but if you-
I've seen people do damage with a golf club, but it's not likely they're gonna be able to kill 30 people like at Virginia Tech.
It's not automatic either.
Compared to murder rate from Great Britain and Canada to America, but if you compare the murder rate of Indiana, or Indianapolis, or Texas, where they do have concealed and carry to Chicago, Chicago beats them by far. So, you know, my thing is, I, I, I agree with, with, with the guy. Like, if someone comes in my house, I need to be able to protect myself and my family. And I don't think, and if you look at who guns have been taken from, they've been taken from black people. When, you know, when you go out to other neighborhoods and other people, they have the right to have guns, and guess what? Crime is low in those areas. When you come to the inner city, where, where guns have been taken away from law-abiding citizens, crime is high in these areas. And I think we can do all types of studies, but, but the studies show that the people who don't have the guns are the people who have the highest crime rate.
But that's not what I said. I said, "The problem is not the legal guns." I said, "I am not personally an advocate of concealed carry." You're talking about having a weapon in your home? I get that, I absolutely get it. But in general, the answer to illegal guns is not more guns. Right? It's not more guns, it's cut off the supply of the illegal guns, practical gun laws. And that is not, that is not advocating, you know, abolition of guns, more guns. That's somewhere in the middle of what everybody wants.
I'm gonna go to wrap this up, and I'm gonna give everybody some time to, uh, wrap up. Uh, it is hard to believe that we've come up on an hour already, but before we wrap the show, I will give each panelist 20 seconds for a final comment. And we will start with you, Superintendent, you are on a roll.
Okay, um, well, it's not just guns, it's, God bless, it's the way that we police. And we're changing the way that we police in the city of Chicago. It has to do with community trust. It has to do with the beat cop. It doesn't have to do with specialization and invading a community and putting everybody on the wall. Because that's just, that is just going to foster mistrust in the community. It's about knowing who the criminals are and going out and getting them. That's gonna foster community trust, while at the same time, that'll help us overcome things like no snitching. That'll help us overcome things like where are the guns? That'll help us overcome where are the criminals?
Diane Lattaker?
I would like to make an appeal to everybody as a mother, as a resident of my community. As, as trying to help young people, I need all of you. I need all of you. I need the superintendent, I need you, I need you, I need everybody. I need the radio stations, I need everybody to help. I, I, I'm serious, we all need to look, start looking at each other, and we need to help each other with this issue, and we need to stop sitting back talking about it. We've talked enough. Let's help each other to do something about this situation.
Pamela Bosley?
Yes, I, I agree with Diane, we all have to come together and collaborate. I know we sit around, we always talk about solutions, but when we leave here, we don't do action. So we have to learn how to come together, not just come together and talk, but go on the streets and, and take care of these, these children. I work with children, every, youth every day, uh, 12 to 24. We have to come together, and we have to learn how to show love, attention, because they not getting it at home. They not getting it, the parents not parenting children like they used to, so we can't blame the people.